I'd like to bring the Building and Grounds Subcommittee to order. Roll call, please.
Member Gaitley?
Present.
Member Castellanos?
Present.
Member Capola?
Present.
Do you want me to...I'll do a little intro. We have Principal Kalala here from Shoemaker School who has been offered a donation and would like to share some plans to potentially use these donations for and looking for approval to pursue. So I'm going to turn it over to Christina.
So the donation is slid to go to our Shoemaker School PTO because they are established 501(c)(3) nonprofit. And so I had a neighbor at Shoemaker reach out to me in June about an interest in trying to improve some of the schoolyard. So we've had some meetings at the district level to talk about what might be possible. And so this is a picture of our schoolyard. We've had some updates done this summer.
You have to speak into the mic because they can't hear you outside.
There's a clicker there.
Thank you. So we received a donation or someone who was interested in donating to the Shoemaker PTO is established 501(c)(3). And we've been working on some ideas for what might be possible in the schoolyard, still keeping in mind that we sometimes when it snows in the winter, we do have to still park cars in there and thinking about sustainability of long term. So in talking with the city, we actually had someone come out to give a...to take a look and give a quote around paving. And Inspection Services has said that they will cover the paving of the schoolyard. So our funds will be able to be put towards some things for the schoolyard. So we... Okay. There you go. Just a little delayed, that's all. So one thing that we would like to do is put in some sensory walls around the schoolyard. Yeah, okay. Oh, it's delayed, okay. All right. I'll talk to you guys about it, okay? So this is...these are just some ideas of sensory walls. They have some phone calls out to get some quotes on different things. Keeping in mind, we're going to be cognizant of the fact that plows need to come into the schoolyard. So just trying to keep in mind placement of these things, but knowing that 50% of the Shoemaker School population is special education and we want to provide as many inclusive opportunities as we can. So this is one example. See how long it takes. This is music, a soundboard that we enjoy. I've gotten feedback so far from my school council and they had actually come to me with this idea before the donation even came. This was something that they wanted to pursue and so it lined up well and some ideas from staff so far. But we're going to be surveying the students and families to get additional feedback as well. Oh, okay. So the next thing is a play panel. There are a variety of these. There are a lot of different companies out there that have these as options and they can be freestanding structures close to the fence so as to not interfere with the plowing or parking when needed. These are just a few more examples. This is a kind of like a STEM wall. So there's...it's a magnetic wall and we would set this up, have, you know, our student council kind of have some responsibility around setting some of these things up in the morning before recess started. And then on the heart...the schoolyard on the pavement, we are hoping to make it colorful and interactive as much as possible. So we have some of these on our survey for the students to ask them, you know, what they think would be the most effective games out there or what they think would be fun. This is just another example of something on the pavement. Probably just keep pressing. There's like three or four examples of different things that, you know, we found and that staff found and families found as suggestions. I have reached out. I haven't heard back yet from Raats about possibly having them do the painting. I thought that would be a nice collaboration. This is another piece that we're hoping to install. We have a little corner, so it wouldn't take up too much space, but would be something that would be interactive. This is just like some, you know, confidence building hopscotch. And then we are hoping to put in at least one buddy bench. So that's a place where kids can go and sit and if they, you know, want a buddy, then the students understand that that's someone who's looking to talk to a friend or have a friend come over and talk to them. So we also have an area behind the school where we believe we can install some basketball hoops because that's a big request from the students. And so we can set up a system for students to be able to access that during recess time.
Thank you, Christina.
Any questions?
Any questions?
Member Capola? And then Member Castellanos?
And how much was the donation for?
$100,000.
Amazing. That's a good neighbor.
Yes. Her child's coming to Shoemaker in a year and a half.
Oh, nice. Great.
That's what I was going to ask. Initially, it was $50,000?
Yes, initially.
And then they...
And she increased it.
Wow.
Yeah, when she found out, like, how much things cost because these play panels are quite expensive.
All right.
And the Castellanos?
In the timeline, what's that look like?
So if we're able to move forward with the paving with...in the next few weeks, something that the paving company mentioned was that over the winter, some sort of moisture needs to come up through the pavement. So the...they recommended not painting until the spring so that it doesn't dull the paint over the winter with the snow and the moisture that's coming up from that, I guess, the first time that it's like sitting and settling. So that was the recommendation. I'm hoping that if the winter is somewhat mild, that we might be able to move forward with the play structure...the play panels sooner than the springtime.
For plowing and like those plants for snow removal, like, I'm just curious, like, do we...so with that $100,000, when will we pay for their actual equipment? Like, if we buy their equipment, is it something that we locked in for...like, the price for all that, is that going to be...is $100,000 enough?
The panels?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, I think so. Yeah, I think that we'll just make sure that we keep within the parameters of what the funding that we have.
Okay. And when will...so after-school weekends, will people have access? Will the public have access to that park?
Well, it's just the schoolyard. So, yeah, we have families out there all the time after school and on the weekends they come, right? They ride their bikes around the schoolyard. So, yeah, it would be certainly available, you know. Those...most of the things are freestanding. The example, like with that magnetic whiteboard, those materials are probably going to be, like, locked up in a shed, but the majority of the things would be available for anyone in the neighborhood to use.
I love that with the coach program and I could imagine though with the need, right, for across the city, the inclusion on that piece. I bet you'll see people there on the weekends. That's why I wanted to kind of ask that question. I think it's a very important...I think this is a great project. I'd like to make a motion to move...
All right, excuse me. I have to ask a question.
Sorry.
That's why I gave you the gavel. And then Member Magnolia would like to speak also. Okay, so I'll speak. We went to...Deputy Rogero and I came up. We walked around. We looked at the neighborhood, I mean, like, at the areas. I was very impressed. I'm so excited to hear that it was $100,000, not just the 50, which 50 is big, I understand, but $100,000 is going to get us there. The one thing I didn't hear you talk about was a storage area. You were going to...we were talking about having a storage area to put things in and lock it up.
Yes, so we're hoping to put in just a small, like, a shed that would be, you know, pretty permanent, but possibly just one of the ones that you get at, like, Costco, something like that. But that could be locked so that the...if, you know, all of the recess equipment could be stored out there.
And I know you probably did, but tell her how...the family, how grateful we are for this.
Oh, yes. Yeah, they asked if it would be possible to maybe put like a small plaque up and her family was interested in seeing some progress photos along the way. So I assured her, of course, we would do that.
Of course. Thank you.
So given that the city doesn't have any inclusive playgrounds at any of its buildings, are height for wheelchairs going to be taken into consideration in the building of this, knowing that parking is actually quite easy at this school? And so folks from around the city might come who have kids in wheelchairs who might want to use this?
Yeah, absolutely. I think that we would definitely keep that in mind and, you know, some of them are geared toward younger students anyway, and so keeping it lower on the ground is something we're considering.
Thank you.
Member Castellanos?
Remind, staff parking, like, what's the update on parking?
Oh, in general?
Yeah.
No, it's difficult. There's a lot of resident parking, but we are utilizing, you know, various places and the parking concern here for the...is in the winter when the snow mounds are, you know, six feet tall on the sidewalks and we can't use...utilize any street parking. But we've been communicating with neighbors wherever needed to make sure that if anything, a car needs to be moved, we have not had a lot of issues during the school day. It's the drop off and pickup tends to be a little more difficult.
I make a motion to move forward to support the project?
Second.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Member Gaitley?
Yes.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Capola?
And just to add, to move to the full committee. Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Member Gaitley?
Yes.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Capola?
Yes, yep. Thank you, Mrs. Kalala.
Thank you so much. Very exciting. That takes us to open mic. The open mic session is designed to provide an opportunity for citizens to express their views on matters of concern in the school committee. The sessions are not designed to encourage debate or lengthy exchange of views, but are to have the committee understand numerous points of view. The committee would appreciate speakers keeping their presentation to three minutes in order to accommodate as many people as time permits. The chair reserves the right to limit the number of speakers on the same topic to three. All speakers must be at least 18 years of age or enrolled in high school in the public schools district and have discussed their views with a student government representative. The chair reserves the right to rule the speaker out of order if they feel that the speaker's comments are personal in nature. If a speaker's comments are directed at a school community member or a member of the school administration in attendance, that member through the chair may address the individual. The sessions will promptly commence 15 minutes prior to the start of the school committee meeting. Anyone here wishing to speak at open mic? Anyone for open mic? Last call for open mic. We will close open mic and move to the 15th regular meeting of the school committee. Roll call, please.
Member Castellanos?
Present.
Member Capola?
Present.
Member Dugan?
Present.
Member Gaitley?
Present.
Member Magnolia?
Present.
Member Peña?
Present.
Mayor Nicholson?
Present.
I would also like to welcome our student government representative this evening, Andy Lee from Lynn Classical. Great to have you. Yeah. Can I ask everyone to please rise for a salute to the flag and remain standing for a moment of silence?
(Inaudible) of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence in memory of Elizabeth Leonard, retired clerk passed on September 27, 2023. First items of the minutes.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the policy Subcommittee meeting on September 26, 2023, the Building and Grounds Subcommittee meeting on September 28, 2023, and the fourth regular meeting on September 28, 2023.
Second.
Move. Does... Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post. I have it.
I always check.
Appointments and elections.
So this evening, we have one appointment on our agenda and that is Amanda Campbell. She's currently the deputy director for MLE and we have had an open position for the executive director. And so I am appointing her interim executive director of multilingual education. So we're very excited and she is not able to be with us tonight, but I'm sure she will join us for some other school committee meeting to give a presentation.
Great, thank you. Congratulations. Would be open to a motion to amend the agenda to move up our field trip requests.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post. I have it. Field trip request from Lynn Classical basketball team to Orlando, Florida, December 14 to December 18. What is the recommendation of the superintendent?
The recommendation is that we have received all of the appropriate materials for the team to take this trip. And so it is for the school committee to approve the team to travel at this time.
And we have some representatives here from the team if you'd like to share an update. Not required, but more than welcome.
First of all, I want to thank the school committee and everyone else that don't know me. My name's Marvin Avery. I'm the head basketball coach at Lynn Classical. First of all, for the most part, I really appreciate you guys having us here tonight. I can't say enough about my administration back meeting and starts from the top with Amy Dunn, Dennis Thompson, Chris Warren, my athletic directors and the faculty, Kathy Ellis and Billy Devon. These kids worked hard the last past two years fundraising. We did a nice job. We met our goal with the help of everyone throughout the city, everyone that knows Marvin Avery and staff. We couldn't have done it without them. We asked for a lot of donations and it came up and we did a nice job. But unfortunately, we got a little twisted into it, but we make that happen too where we have to travel to school near us. So I'm asking you guys to give us the opportunity to travel to Florida with these young men and make them...make a special adventure for them that they never forget. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Coach.
I'm sorry, any questions?
Any questions? Yeah, Member Gaitley and then Member Castellanos.
Hello, Marvin.
Hi, Lorraine.
I just want you to know that I am so impressed with this application. It's probably more specific than I've ever seen for an application for a field trip. And I've heard of other teams going to Florida for that time to play basketball and I'm thrilled that you took this on and I'm thrilled that you have all the support from your school. So thank you for coming forward.
Thank you too, Lorraine.
Member Castellanos and Mayor Peña.
Coach Avery and to everyone here to support the Lynn Classical basketball team, I just ...I just really want to echo what Member Gaitley just said because this is probably one of the most organized and put together applications I've ever seen. As an athlete myself, I know this trip is bigger than life. Athletes really...you guys, coaches and folks involved in athletics really changed these kids' lives and put them on a trajectory for their futures, you know? They're future leaders. They are leaders. It's something that I'm very grateful to support and I'm very...actually, this is emotional to see it, you know? I definitely...I'm impressed and I'm grateful. I think that's the word I want to use, grateful, because folks like you keep our kids off the streets, guys give them much-needed mentorship that, you know, 30 years from now, they're still going to come back, call you coach. I still see coaches today, I still call coach. And I'll never call them by their first names as a certain...it's a beautiful thing and I'm just grateful, really. Thank you guys for all your time and Mr. Devon, Mr. Warren, everyone here to support, to go through this process and we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Member Peña?
Thank you, Coach. Thank you for coming down. Want to thank the staff, thank Coach Avery. You know, from one coach to another, you know, the job goes beyond, beyond the field. You're always a coach. Whenever those kids see you and you're inspiration to the community, not only to Classical, but to the city of Lynn. I've known you my whole life, you know, and I know what you do for our kids and the first time you had the thought, I was like, I'm right behind you, Coach. And this is like, like, remember Castellano just pointed out that this is well put together and, you know, I know...I know your heart's in it for the kids. I definitely know that. If anyone knows Coach Avery, he's the real deal, you know? And like you said, the job goes well beyond, you know? And you mentor many, many kids. You change many lives, you know? And I love you, Coach. Thank you. Thank you for everyone and the staff, the whole faculty.
Thank you.
Anyone else have questions?
Member Dugan? I'd like to make a motion to let the Lynn Classical basketball team go on the field trip to Florida. Second.
Oh, real quick, one thing. Is there room for chaperone?
Got to have a school committee member, two of them in there.
Yeah, but you got to pay.
Just kidding, Coach.
Thank you. Thank you so much for the presentation. Thank you to our whole team. This is a really proud moment for the city and we wish you guys the absolute best.
And a safe trip.
Yes, absolutely, absolutely. Roll call, please.
Go Rams.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Capola?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gaitley?
Yes.
Member Magnolia?
Yes.
Member Peña?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes.
Good luck.
Safe trip, Coach.
Nice job, Coach.
Thank you.
(Applause).
All right, next item is the diversity, equity and inclusion presentation.
Good evening.
My name is Robert Bishop. I'm honored to be the interim executive director of diversity, equity and inclusion for Lynn Public Schools. The past months have been a learning experience as I've received remarkable support and guidance from my fellow executive directors, deputy superintendent, superintendent and more as we've established a vision and a framework for this important department. I want to begin by just casting a vision for belonging, building and becoming. A diversity approach is never sufficient if we fail to identify and resist systems of inequality. Stratification impedes people from thriving. Beverly Daniel Tatum said that. Social stratification refers to a society's categorization of its people into groups and it determines their access to opportunities and privileges. And I'm a firm believer that a diversity approach where we merely celebrate and acknowledge diversity is insufficient. Although it is a vital prerequisite, it doesn't guarantee equity and inclusion. So I'm just going to cast some vision for you. Diversity refers to who is represented, including race, ethnicity, nationality, age, gender, ability and intersections of these things. And equity refers to fair treatment for all people so that the norms, practices, policies in place ensure that identity is not predictive of opportunities and outcomes. And inclusion refers to how the students and adults experience school. In our case, embracing the whole person helps them to flourish. Equity is this theme that it's like seemingly woven into so many conversations right now. Almost every document we have right now has the word equity in it, in meetings, conversations, presentations. And this is deliberate and it is necessary, but it isn't intended to be a component. Operating through equity means establishing, revising and supporting structures designed for equal opportunity. A recent story that one of my daughters incidentally showed me, Andy, one of my daughters recently showed me was a TikTok video of a teacher who was teaching this to a second grade class. She was teaching equity. And she said, did anyone here, does anyone have a scrape or anything like that? Did anyone fall down at recess? And one student said, yes, I do. Actually, I scraped my elbow. And she said, come up here. She pulled out a Band-Aid and she said, here's a Band-Aid for your elbow. She said, thank you, put it on. Student sat back down and she said, did anyone else, does anyone else have a scrape? And one student said, yeah, I scraped my knee. She said, come on up. Here's a Band-Aid for your elbow. And the student was confused, scraped my knee. She said, yeah, I know, this is for your elbow, though. And then another student had another injury and again, here's a Band-Aid for your elbow. The difference between equality and equity is that equality presumes that we're all starting from the same place, whereas equity makes sure that everybody gets what they need. At the Defending Democracy event this past week, Dr. Tutwiler said some of our children need something different and more, and that's equity. So I'm going to cast a little vision here for what we're doing. As everybody knows, it's been a couple of months now since I've been kind of completely immersed into this...into this department. I'm a department of one right now, so we're laying some groundwork as far as what we're going to do. And thankfully, I have an amazing...I have an amazing amount of support out here. This hasn't been an expectation of, hey, go figure it out. Everybody's been remarkable. So we've identified some...our supporting structures for diversity, equity, inclusion and belonging. Like other departments, it's presently composed of supporting structures. So the structures in green are the ones that I'm directly overseeing and supporting and the structures in blue are important DEI partnerships. I'm going to share my SMART goals for the year with you. The...my asterisk here is that I'm not defining everything that's going to transpire regarding diversity, equity, inclusion. This is going to be an evolution as we go, new things that get identified every single day. And thankfully, and it's kind of been an honor to be pulled into these conversations, quite frankly. But regardless, it's important to have SMART goals and I've had some amazing guidance on that, so I'm going to share them with you. So the first goal is to support and develop student and staff initiatives that enhance the climate and culture for historically marginalized groups within LPS, fostering an inclusive and equitable environment. So with the guidance of Dr. Shorter, Dr. Alvarez, Dr. Gardner, more, I've developed goals that are going to be aligned with their departments as well. So the first part of this action plan is to enhance and encourage student participation in the inclusivity teams by creating opportunities for authentic engagement. And additionally, to enhance and encourage staff participation in the inclusivity teams by creating opportunities. And I say staff as well, granted, we have the support structure in place as far as...as far as staff mentors and as far as team mentors as well. However, in this case, I'm also talking about making sure that stakeholders are well aware of what's going on. In the inclusivity panels that have transpired over the past couple of years, I've found that when stakeholders come and they buy into what's happening, that's when the energy builds, that's when the enthusiasm builds. And that was a component. I was a mentor last year. That was one of the components that I felt kind of fell off a little bit. It lost its gloss a little bit and I want to bring that back. I want to try to create some excitement around what the students are coming up with, the projects that they're building, the research that they're doing. It's exciting for everybody else in the buildings to see that that's happening and the people in the community to see that the students are being deliberate, that they're coming up with ideas and then they're doing research and then they're proposing their projects. Regarding measurements of success, so there's a...we have an X percentage. You're going to see this throughout my presentation. An adequate percentage on some of these goals hasn't yet been chosen. It's used as a placeholder because we're in the process of selecting a student climate and culture survey that allows us to best capture students' perceptions in LPS with consideration to cost, implementation, life and availability in multiple languages. So Desti currently has a climate and culture survey. However, that's limited to fifth, eighth and 10th grade once a year. It captures 23% to 25% of our students and it's only available in English. We want a tool that allows all student voices to be heard. Additionally, for staff, we have the Educator's Thriving Report. However, at this time, we believe it might not be the best tool to capture this information as well. So we're exploring options for a good tool to be using. So we're exploring different resources. So once initial surveys are completed, these are going to guide a lot of my goals throughout the year. Do first surveys, we'll do second surveys and then we'll have a little bit more information regarding what improved, where do we need to pivot and make changes so that these goals are effective. And it's been encouraging to see a lot of new faces that, as far as people who have signed up to be mentors and things like that. And, um, like I said, there's vision, there's a lot of vision that, that the wheels are already turning with the kids regarding ideas that they have or things that they'd like to see change in their schools, things that they see, um, that aren't equitable and how they can contribute. Uh, so my hope is that these numbers do grow. As you can see, Breed has a very strong team and we've kind of used them as a model last year and this year because they, they've just did a really excellent job at some times. Some pictures from, from last year, some of the great events that took place. Uh, we have the inclusivity summit that transpired at the end of the year at Breed. Uh, we have the school committee presentations, which, which were excellent. I was really proud of my Classical crew. And, uh, for Classical, we also took, uh, took the students on a trip to the Museum of African-American History. We spent a day in Boston together and we just had a remarkable time. And again, I wanna highlight the Breed team. They have, uh, like I said, been a, been a template, uh, regarding how this should be done. They've been very thorough. Uh, their, their data, their research has been, uh, impeccable. So because of that, I've really been trying to kinda use them as the template, like, hey, look, look how passionate they've been and as a result, look how many kids have been wanting to be a part of this. So the second part of my, uh, of goal number one, as far as an action plan, is, is supporting and developing student and staff initiatives, is to support human resource initiatives regarding an increase in, in BIPOC staff members, so Black, Indigenous, people of color. Uh, this is, this is a district goal that I'm supporting. And, uh, so I'm supporting human resource initiatives and I also want to foster the development and expansion of staff and administrative affinity groups to ensure that district processes, activities, and programming are inclusive and representative of BIPOC voices. So by June, again, the placeholder X, by June, um, the goal is that BIPOC staff will report more positive experience in LPS and the same, um, as far as the affinity groups, that we'll see an increase in attendance for the affinity groups. I had a conversation with one of the affinity group leaders yesterday and it's, it's a conversation surrounding the idea that, uh, I recognize fully that that isn't my space. I'm a guest in that space and I respect that. However, I do want to be an advocate and a vehicle for that space as well. So as things transpire, as ideas come up, um, as issues transpire, that they've identified that they would like to see some changes in, that I could then be a vehicle, uh, to These are our current LPS personnel demographics. And one of, one of our goals, you know, regarding the fact that BIPOC staff members compose 10% of our personnel, and, uh, however, there have been, uh, human resources provided me some data regarding incremental increases. In '22, '23, there was an increase of 5.9%. So far this year, '23, '24, an additional 2% increase, so almost 8% over two years. Uh, so there's growth on top of growth and this is also a district goal that I'm supporting to ensure that we, uh, we continue to see, make deliberate moves, provide opportunities for professional growth, so that our BIPOC staff continues to be more reflective of our student body. Goal number two is to cultivate an inclusive LPS climate that champions diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging, including race, socioeconomic background, gender, disability, sexual orientation, age, ethnicity, language, and national origin. So the first part of the action plan is to develop PTEC cultures. So PTEC is personal and team equity culture. I'm gonna get into that in a minute. In each school building, throughout, through principal partnerships, staff and student surveys, learning walks, and focus groups, and the measurement of success is that staff will report experiencing an improvement in, in personal and team equity culture and that students will also report the same thing. Uh, we will have a measurable goal in year two, once we can do climates, climate and culture surveys, um, that we'll be developing. So what, what is, what is PTEC? We are, the office of the superintendent and, uh, executive directors and I, we attended session one of the Equity and Action Series, uh, a couple of weeks ago with the Mass Association of School Superintendents, Racial Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion, Mass Ready. We, we're gonna be going through a process with them throughout the course of the year and we've, we've picked a, uh, an application network called Immunity to Change, which is two more in-person sessions and five virtual sessions. So we're, we're building as a team regarding how to implement, um, a personal and team equity culture into the buildings. Um, and I, I do want to say, this doesn't mean that it's, it doesn't already exist. Uh, this isn't something that you just go in and say, hey, we're, and I, I talked to a principal about this yesterday. I, I, unfortunately, I felt like maybe I had her on her heels a little bit and I didn't intend that, um, cause I can see the things that were going on in the building. So I said, hey, listen, tell me some of the things that are happening in this building right now. And she started talking about a program that she'd helped develop that brought a marginalized group of students to the forefront and she developed an amazing program around them and it's thriving. And I said, listen, you're already doing it. What we're gonna do is we're gonna try to augment that by continuing to identify things and that's gonna require more surveying and bringing teams together and just making it a conversation so that it's a partnership. Uh, the idea is an inside-out approach. Each, each individual school has its own circumstances and, and situations going on and we just want to, want to partner with the schools to, uh, to be a bigger support to them in this area. So, um, Mass Ready, uh, reimagining integration, diverse, and equitable schools, that's ROD. So Mass Ready utilizes Harvard Graduate Schools of Education, um, resources as well. So this is the ABCD, the ABCs, the academics, belonging, commitment to dismantling racism and oppression, and diversity. So these are things that we are learning as a district this year. Uh, we'll say learning, I wanna say, these are things that we are continuing to learn more about, uh, regarding how to effectively implement in school systems, how to implement, uh, PTEC culture in, in a school system. So the second part of this action plan is to cultivate an inclusive LPS climate that champions diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging. Like I said, the second part is to collaborate with the Departments of Multilingual Education, Curriculum and Instruction, Data and Assessment, and Innovation and Grants Management regarding culturally-affirming classroom practices. Uh, set, including setting discussion norms, incorporation of language, and expressing assets of students' culture. And we're gonna, again, measure this success in that there's a percent of students that will report an improvement in culturally-affirming classroom practices. Uh, we'll determine, again, the best resource for culture and climate surveys. And I have some remarkable resources as far as people who have already done this and, and that is, uh, that is also exciting for me to, cause I have much to learn and I'm excited to implement that as well. Goal number three is to contribute to systems and procedures to ensure historically marginalized students are afforded access to advanced coursework. First part of the action plan is to collaborate with the Department of Innovation and Grants Management regarding AP and early college programs through committee participation. There's already pre-existing committees that have, that have been established. Dr. Gardner has already got, already has this started, so I'm a part of that, supporting that. Um, and the measurement of success, again, this is a district goal that I'm supporting, will be, there'll be an increase to advanced coursework for economically disadvantaged students as evidenced by an increase in enrollment, in advanced placement, dual enrollment, or STEM courses. And there'll be an increase of students with disabilities, uh, in the same courses. This data is a little bit, um, there's a lot to this data, but what it comes down to is socioeconomic status. Students with disabilities and English learners, um, are not, uh, as represented as they, as we would argue they would need to be, uh, presently. So this is one of our goals, to ensure that, uh, the disproportionate number of enrollments, uh, that we, that we move that needle this year. So this one reflects just AP and then the next slide reflects early college. So I know you have your printouts as far as that goes, but you can see that there, uh, in the just AP, there, there is no, uh, English learner, uh, representation right now. That's something we want to change in their initiatives that we are, uh, working on in order to do that. That is the goal. So the second part of this action plan is to collaborate with the Special Education Department regarding strategies to address the disproportionate number of students with disabilities in substantially separate classrooms and not placed in least restrictive environments. And to facilitate an LPS working group addressing disproportionate students with disability enrollment in substantially separate classrooms. So by June 2024, a notable increase in students placed in least restrictive environments. Again, a district goal. Um, this goal will be developed based on further collaboration with the Special Education Department. Our, our numbers are behind the state numbers. The, the goal here would be 100%. Massachusetts says that 80% weren't, 64%. Goal number four is to contribute to systems and procedures to ensure historically marginalized students face equal disciplinary action. So participating in the Office of Compliance Correction Action Team, that is pre-existing, uh, regarding disproportionate discipline for students with disabilities, the Department of DEI will actively contribute regarding progressive discipline and restorative practices. I did a lot of research today, in fact, on what's gonna be the best resource for that because it can't just be like a, a one-off professional development. We need to learn how to orchestrate that professional development, to execute that ourselves. So today I did some research on who, what's gonna be the best resource to teach us how to do it so that this is something that we do every year. So this becomes a part of our culture, uh, regarding restorative practice. Uh, so the goal is by June 2024 to have a restorative practice model in place and by June 2025, a decrease in disciplinary action for students with disabilities. Now, from 21, 20, 22 to 22, 23, we had a significant decrease. So this is reflective, there were actually more students with disabilities identified the, the previous year than the next year. So 21, 22, there were more students than 22, 20, 22, 23, excuse me, the other way around. 22, 22, 23, there were more students identified with disabilities, forgive me. Um, so it, it's actually a pretty big jump regarding how much it decreased. And I, I strongly believe that is, actually, at Ms. Regero's directive, she made it very clear to our district, uh, to our buildings that, listen, students' accommodations need to be considered strongly when it comes down to discipline. So this is, again, not a new novel idea. This has been being done, um, but this is something that we want to continue to see decrease. Um, so that, that number is a big jump, but I know that's because of the directive that transpired and I saw, I saw it in action in, in my previous job as a clinical supervisor regarding the practices that were taking place, the collaborations that were happening to ensure that students with accommodations were being considered when it came down to disciplinary practice. So we wanna keep moving forward in that direction. The fourth goal is to contribute to systems and procedures, like I said, regarding marginalized students facing equal disciplinary action. I'm collaborating with the Office of Compliance and Corrective Action Team regarding protective sweeps. Um, and collaborating with the Department of Social and Emotional Learning and the Office of Compliance regarding trauma-informed and culturally-sensitive practices as they pertain to the protective sweeps. And to implement staff professional development regarding trauma-informed and culturally-sensitive practices. Uh, again, today I was doing a lot of research. This has been something that we've been working on to ensure that, um, the SEL, the Social and Emotional Learning and, and the DEI departments work hand in hand, that we collaborate on this. This is a very strong intersection. One of the first conversations I had with Dr. Alvarez is that DEI and SEL, uh, SEL is DEI, DEI is SEL. Um, so because of that, we're gonna be working together to determine the, the best way to implement, uh, not just suggestions, but a professional development to ensure that, regarding the protective sweeps, um, that our practices are trauma-informed and culturally-sensitive. My last goal is to develop and implement staff and, and further staff, uh, professional development pertaining to DEI practices. So with this, some other, some other things that we want to implement are to collaborate with the SEL Department and the Department of Multilingual Education regarding culturally-affirming spaces. And initiated LPS working group regarding gender identity utilizing the mass curriculum framework. And thankfully, we also have Mass Ready training that we're doing and a lot of the ideas that they've already brought to the table just at the first session have my wheels turning about how we're gonna effectively implement this. The goal would be June 2025, we want to see an improvement, um, in culturally-affirming spaces from students and staff. I got started on this already, but this was just the cover for it. But the, the culturally-affirming spaces is coming as well. Thank you. Can I answer anybody's questions to the best of my ability?
Did you have something, Andy?
Yeah.
Andy, Andy?
Oh, Andy, oh, I'm sorry. Andy?
Yeah. Take it away. I'm thinking about the, uh, the like, we have a large population in Lynn Public Schools, right? And to like, create the sense of belonging, um, I feel like it really needs to come from within. Um, so how do we increase this, like, student culture with, um, belonging and equity and inclusion? Um, because there's like, I feel like it can't really be enforced by, like, adults and staff, um, because this is like, I, I see a lot of your, like, your sayings here in this, uh, presentation. And there's a lot of like, staff work and like, showing that, uh, in like, the surface, but I really wanna dig deeper into the student level and just see like, how, like, how we can spread this awareness of belonging, um, because I believe belonging can facilitate, um, greater learning and like, greater like, chances for, um, low-income, low-income students and those that are, um, with disabilities to really spread their wings and, uh, learn a little bit more about like, the world around them. Um, so I really do think that we need to, um, like, focus a little bit more on the student section.
Sure. I remember Andy sitting at my kitchen table when he was in the eighth grade and thinking to myself, this kid's going somewhere, right? So this is still a classic. Andy, thank you. Uh, you're right. The adults can implement policy, we can implement strategy and, um, and set an example, right? But if we aren't, uh, being extremely proactive about culturally creating an environment where the students feel empowered to do that, uh, then, then we've missed something, that there's gonna be a disconnect there. So I agree with you 100% on that. Uh, as far as the, the strategies to do that, uh, on a small scale, uh, I have a lot of experience doing that. On this grand scale, that, you're, you're absolutely right. It's a much bigger idea. Uh, and, but I do, I do have a lot of faith that there are people in this district who genuinely believe that if we set an example and lead the way for the students, that the students will follow suit. But we have to provide opportunities for you to do it. Uh, opportunities for you to feel empowered to do it, feel equipped and knowledgeable to do it and set that example and so that each school has a culture that you feel has shifted. So I, I would love to talk to you sometime outside of here and just really get your ideas because it's clear you have great ones. So if you'd like to do that, I'd love to, I'd love to be in touch with you.
Of course.
Appreciate that.
Great. Member Dugan and then Member Magnolia.
Sure. Um, actually, Andy, great minds think alike because I was gonna ask a very similar question, so thank you. I think yours is gonna be greater than mine then someday though, so, uh, well done. Um, just a quick one then, cause like I said, Andy covered the first one. The protective sweep team, are you gonna be a part of that? Just to, you're on, you're on the team. Okay. That's all I need to know. Thank you.
Thank you.
Member Magnolia, Member Castellanos.
Thank you very much for the presentation. Um, I have two very specific questions. For your action plan 4.1, um, are there going to be any audits of disciplinary records to look for patterns? Um, and the reason I'm asking this question is because, um, students with disabilities is a really important category to, to, to look for patterns, but, um, so isn't gender, race, and language. And I think drilling down on like, an auditing of those records would really help us see if there's something different happening at the middle school level versus the high school level, if we're, you know, if we're seeing different things. And I, I wanna make sure, not that the students with disabilities category, as you, you point out, that maybe IEPs were not previously being taken into consideration in ways they should have been. But I, I know just from anecdotal experience, sometimes language barriers lead to disciplinary action, sometimes cultural expectations lead to disciplinary action. And I want to make sure that we can drill down on some of this, um, because I think once patterns emerge, it's much easier to target DEI, J, and B, uh, to, to make sure that we're focusing on, on those areas specifically.
I, I agree with you. Incidentally, a, a lot of the pre-existing research, I was reading an article today, today, in fact, a lot of the research actually points in the direction that you're talking regarding all of the different groups. Most of the articles I've read actually focus more on, on race and ethnicity than they do students with disabilities. So my presumption is the answer to that question is yes, regarding how, uh, developing or implementing an auditing system to ensure that we're looking at the patterns. Dr. Shorter just has to take a quick glance at something and knows exactly what she's looking at, which is wonderful. So yeah. Incidentally, a lot of the pre-existing research, I was reading an article today, in fact, a lot of the research actually points in the direction that you're talking regarding all of the different groups. Most of the articles I've read actually focus more on, on race and ethnicity than they do students with disabilities. So my presumption is the answer to that question is yes, regarding developing or implementing an auditing system to ensure that we're looking at the patterns. Dr. Shorter just has to take a quick glance at something and knows exactly what she's looking at, which is wonderful. So yes, that's going to be something that's going to be very important. I agree.
Well, I think it's becoming clear to Dr. Shorter that I'm a data nerd, so I think in my questions, you can see I'm saying, what does the data tell us?
Absolutely.
Okay, so the second thing, and this is actually nowhere in your presentation, but it is a little bit of a piggyback there. Because I have a kiddo who just transitioned from elementary to middle school, I think it's really important for us to think about those touchpoints as our students transition and how belonging happens then. So this is a totally different area of DEI from what you're talking about, but because I'm coming from the higher education level and because we have Frederick Douglass Academy, I can tell you that all the research says comfort with the building, comfort with, you know, the new environment is one of the first markers of belonging. And I will just say, I don't think that we do a great job with that, at least in my anecdotal experience. And if we're not doing a great job at that, then all the DEIJ stuff is not going to be as effective. And, and you know, like I said, I do have a kiddo who just transitioned from elementary to, to middle school and is, is feeling these growing pains. But I think it might be worthwhile to analyze what structures we have in place, whether interpersonal, whether they are like sort of who's assigned to students, what, it's, it's a way of looking at DEIJ in terms of the systems that promote belonging as opposed to like the specific practices or something like that, like culturally responsive teaching or, you know, culturally responsive classrooms, things like that. So it, it wasn't in your, your bid at all, I'm not giving you another goal, I'm just saying, keep this in mind because sometimes we play catch-up because we don't think about those types of moments. And, and so we're, we're kind of doubling our efforts in one area where we could do a little something here and a little something here and together, they would actually get that belonging started off on the right foot.
No, I, I appreciate you saying that and I, I agree. In order to create a system that promotes belonging, something that comes to mind is that I think sometimes it's chalked up to their preconceived ideas on who the people in the building are supposed to be to do that, rather than everybody buying in to a culture. So the idea was, so I'm, I'm also thinking about like tier-one interventions as far as, just as far as programming that is involving in normalizing conversations for the entire student body, things like that. So thank you for that input, I appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Mr. Castellanos.
Mr. Bishop, thank you so much for your robust presentation. I really appreciated the data sets presented tonight, very clear. I think it's crucial work, it's critical. I did have a couple just clarifying kind of questions. On Action Plan 1.1, when we talk about authentic engagement, can you just elaborate a little bit on that piece on, it says enhancing and current students' participation in the inclusivity teams by creating opportunities for authentic engagement? And like the enhanced and encourage staff piece also? Like, I just think there's a little bit more, I just, if you can elaborate on what that looks like.
Yeah, they're, they're a bit vague now because we don't have data to, to point us in what direction to go just yet. However, the authentic engagement piece for the students, so regarding the inclusivity teams, as I'm confident you already know, there's, there's this combination of strategy that goes on with those, those teams in that there's team building, utilizing, utilizing a program that was previously developed, has been implemented for a couple of years now, that helps build camaraderie amongst the groups, that normalizes conversations amongst the groups so that it can come, it becomes a safe space for them. It's hard for the students, I think, to get excited about the data that they're collecting, about the research project that they're implementing based on an idea or a problem they may see or perceive to have in their school that they'd like to help rectify. It's hard to do that when they're not excited about being around each other. So that's usually kind of the first steps in, in the inclusivity teams and then from there, momentum builds. And that, that helps with the authentic engagement. The component where the mentors give the students the space, they don't direct the teams, they guide them and they essentially try to get the ball rolling, like grease the wheels a little bit and then, and then let them loose so that they can engage with one another. It's intended to be also a, a space where students can speak freely about what they're experiencing, knowing that this isn't, this isn't something that is to then go be spoken about liberally amongst the other, this is supposed to be a place where we can talk about this. So then from there, that then ideally gives them some momentum regarding, okay, and now let's do a project together and, and makes, make a difference out here. So that's, it's regarding the authentic engagement, that's a, a big component of it.
Appreciate, I kind of thought like student, enhancing student experience, right? How to really build a village of like teachers, students, families, having people around, that's what I was reading, that kind of, I knew, it sounded vague, but I, I figured we are in the early stages and once we start hammering out some of the goals that you had laid out, I, I, I think it's going to be, the, the, for me, I think the progress monitoring of this, of, you have five goals and I think each of those measurements and the way you laid it out in the SMART, you know, formula, I appreciate that. Keep in mind with each, you know, that's a lot of, those are heavy goals.
Yeah.
So I think the progress monitoring is important and I could see that you're collaborating with multiple departments, which I could see that's going to help facilitate some equity in the, in the, in the data sets with Dr. Short. I think you guys, I think, I love that department, I think it's pretty, it's, I could tell, I could see it in here, I could see a little bit of your blessing in here and I, I do appreciate it. And I just have one more follow-up on Action Plan 1.2. I do, I would like to see, because I know it's, it looks like it's an HR district goal that we're working with, with that action plan. There's no group survey. I think it would benefit to add a affinity group survey on, on kind of building out grassroots recruitment strategy, suggestion, et cetera, kind of like, let's hear it from them, right? I think it would give us opportunity, let's hear the, like before they leave, right? Instead of having exit surveys, which most of the time, you know, it's very difficult to get those as they're on their way out. So let's, let's, how about we, let's tap it to the, the folks now, let's listen to what they have to say now. So I think that's something I like to see in the action plan. That survey would be pretty nice to see.
Appreciate that, yeah. No, you're, you're absolutely right, it's a very good point and can be readily implemented for sure.
Do we have to make, I don't know, this is, no, we don't have to, okay. So it's going to be there? Is it going, do we have any, is it going to be there? Did you write it in there?
Regarding the measure of success number one, that in that, by June 2024, BIPOC staff members will report more positive experiences in LPS. I know that not every, not every Black Indigenous or person of color who works in LPS is necessarily participating in affinity groups. So I, so I agree with you that perhaps that was also a bit vague regarding a broad stroke. I can consult with Dr. Alvarez on how we could get some good data regarding the climate of the affinity groups right now. I've already started meeting with them as well.
Member Castellanos, I do want to share that the affinity groups, as they've gotten together through the spring of last year, they shared some preliminary goals that they have, that they're working on to address exactly, right, what you're, what you're speaking to. So we will definitely be sharing more as we help them develop those out and implement the strategies.
I had member Gailey, member Pena.
Well, I was just going to talk about Breed and I was going to talk about my experience at Thurgood Marshall and what a wonderful job going there, what a wonderful job, Mr. O'Connor just came in to hear my kudos of that inclusivity, inclusivity panel that we, we visited and all the issues that came up. And I was very happy to see that. And you did it such a well, the kids just were so involved, engrossed in it and they, they were like so happy to be able to express their opinions on everything, so.
They were excited, they were excited about who was in the room too. It was, it was so amazing to see their, their faces light up when they started recognizing like, oh, there are people here who actually want to listen to what we have to say.
Yes, so maybe that's, could be a jump-off point or a starting point to include students into the planning. And the other thing is, when I look at the LPS personal demographics, 2023 to 2024, this bothers me. It bothers me a lot and it has for a long time because I have taught so many students of different backgrounds, of different color, everything. I just, they're wonderful. And I don't understand, and maybe part of inclusivity, we could work on, be a teacher. Can we, what is it about teaching that you can get those same feelings that you get from expressing your, your inclusivity of different areas? Could we like say that about teaching so maybe more people would be attracted to the field of teaching? Because it bothers me that, you know, like, it's not that we don't have jobs, we have tons of jobs, not tons anymore, but we have lots of jobs. But, you know, I, I often wondered this and I was just talking to Andy going, why? Why are students not interested in the field of teaching? I, I taught for 40 years, 33 in Lynn, and it, it was the best, best thing I ever did. I always came home with my paycheck and said, they pay me to do this. And that's the way I feel about teachers and like, I, I, how do you impart that with people so that they know that this is the most gratifying job in the world?
One thing that's been encouraging about my experience so far is that this, this is not just a periodic conversation, but this is a conversation that's happening quite a bit. I personally wasn't in a teacher role, as you know, I was in a clinician role, but the numbers aren't that different for the school clinicians as well. I teach adjunct at Salem State in the social work department and MSW program and it's the same pattern. One encouraging thing that is transpiring regarding how to elevate people right now, we have a partnership with Latinos for Education.
Yep.
And yesterday I had a meeting with them and this partnership, I think, is going to hopefully build some momentum regarding, just another thing that someone can add to their resume, that they immerse themselves in a year-long program for the purpose of augmenting their resume and casting a vision for what they're going to do next. And ideally, one of, of the two cohorts that are being offered, one of them is exclusively for teachers. So I'm hoping that, in, in the conversation I had yesterday, that this is going to be a really beneficial partnership. And again, I know that doesn't exactly answer your question regarding how do we then take that enthusiasm and harness it and pass it on to the students? But even the students seeing that these kinds of things are transpiring regarding, regarding the district and trying to bring different opportunities and creative ways to help elevate people, I'm hoping is a, is a good step.
Thank you.
Member Pena.
Thank you, Mr. Bishop, for your presentation. I appreciate your transparency and your plan of action, you know, because we could sit here and tell us all this data that we know, but if we don't have a plan of action or something. And I like your intention, you know, being intent about your plan of action. I've attended, you know, the, your, your forum, you know, the, at Breed, at Clasco, you know, we did, we saw the inclusivity panels. I also, I, I really liked the way you, there was a few events where you, we had parent engagement with the community with the, with the inclusivity panel and that, that was awesome. And that's a, that's a great way to get people, you know, parents involved and, because when you, you bring the parents in, you know, you get more, you know, there's more engagement. And then you want to have students get more involved, especially students want to tell mommy, pop, look, look, what I got, you know, look what I've done. And that was really exciting to see that. And just to see where you're going to, you know, and that was just at Breed, Marshall, I think Clasco, I saw, but to see where you're going to bring it at a district level would be amazing. I just wanted, and I appreciate you working, you know, with the protective sweeps and the SEI, which, and like that, you know, you all collaborate. Just to, um, just to elaborate and to, to touch on, on student inclusivity. I was a freshman at Lynn English High School in 1985 and as a son of an immigrant, you know, with, with Latino, you know, schoolmates, classmates and there wasn't really much of a voice, you know, you know, the culture was different, you know, and, and I could say that today, the culture's a lot different, you know, and how can you get, how can you change the culture around? How can you get students more interested in education? Well, when you see the leadership reflects like what they look like, it starts changing the culture. I think LPS is moving into that direction, you know? I don't want to get, you know, tittered up, but to see children have a voice today, and I don't care what race, you know, but to see students have the inclusivity and that voice and just have some input, it makes a big difference. I appreciate what you're doing and just elaborate, like diversity means nothing if it doesn't reflect from the leadership going now, you know? And I believe LPS is headed in that direction. And I can't wait to see, you know, your data, when you come back to see on, on what, you know, results of your, your, your data, your surveys with the students and I'm, I'm, you know, I can't, I'm excited to see what, what we have coming, what results we have from that. So, thank you, Mr. Bishop.
Thank you. So today I was at Lynn English, I met with Dr. Pena.
Yes.
So he put a video, he had his school put a video together highlighting all of his Latinx staff members and everybody had a little narrative that they shared. And I, I got choked up honestly watching it because it was very inspiring and I was thinking about putting yourself in the, in the, in the shoes of a student watching this. It was an amazing step. That, that had absolutely nothing to do with my department, right? But it is speaking to what you're saying in that for the kids to actually see it, like person after person, representing their country, talking about their culture, their heritage and how proud they are to be a teacher and here's why, which kind of goes back to what you were saying, right? So I agree with you, kind of like back to the beginning of the conversation in that this certainly isn't a, a book that's being rewritten, these things are being implemented, but it, but for it to permeate where it becomes standard, a standard culture and expectation is, is going to mean that we're being very deliberate like you were talking about. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for the presentation, for all your work, the whole team.
Fair enough.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to start by introducing Jenny Winter. She's the Assistant Director of Post-Secondary Earlyness, who has taken over my previous role. You may recognize Jenny from her work as a district civics coordinator over the past three years with Luke Moss. I'm proud of all the work Jenny has done for the district to date and she has hit the ground running with Early College. We know it's been communicated in updates that we have reached 1,000 students in Early College and we want to start by explaining where all the students are. We'll start by discussing the designation schools, LEHS, LCHS, and LVTI. These schools have achieved a formal designation which unlocks Early College funds for course credits and support. And this is how big each program is and the number of students at Frederick Douglass makes up the difference and takes us over 1,000 per hour total. Jenny is going to explain the pathways that we have in the designation schools and touch on some of the coursework being shown. on some of the coursework being shown in the slides.
So first you'll notice that this, I'll get to the details on this slide after in a moment, but the Lit English and Lynn Classical have identical programming, and these are the only schools that partner both with the North Shore Community College and Salem State. The courses are built around the career pathways of IT, business, education, and healthcare. These pathways were agreed upon in a summit several years ago. As I present the slides, you will notice that the course sequence in tenth grade is very similar for North Shore Community College and Salem State. All students take a speech course and a philosophy course. In the spring of tenth grade, after they learn about the career pathways, students rank their choices of pathway, and the coordinators and guidance counselors do their best to give them their first choice. So now I'll outline what's on this slide you see here. This is the North Shore Pathways of IT and Business. The North Shore Pathway differs slightly from Salem State because it starts in the spring of ninth grade. All students take speech, ethics, and English composition. The other courses are career pathway courses meant to spark their interest in their fields, either IT or business. All courses are part of the mass transfer block, which will transfer to state colleges Here you can see the Salem State University Pathways of Education and Healthcare. All students take oral communication for civic engagement and social justice and social ethics in tenth grade. In junior year, all students take Foundations of Writing and a Career Pathways Course in either Healthcare or Education. Similarly, in senior year, all students take a history class as well as a Career Pathways Course, which is meant to spark interest in their field. Again, all courses are part of the mass transfer block, which will transfer to Massachusetts In exploring ways to expand access to MLE students, North Shore Community College shared that they offered courses in Spanish language. We worked with them to create this pathway, which follows a two-year sequence. The courses are mixed grade levels for tenth, eleventh, and twelfth grade students. The work of widening access for MLE students is not considered finished, just because we have this pathway. We have MLE students who speak other languages, and ideally, we will continue working with the colleges to create college courses in English with intentionally planned language supports. Shannon will discuss this ongoing work later on in our presentation. The Lynn Tech Pathway does not start until eleventh grade. This is because in ninth and tenth grade, Lynn Tech students are fulfilling academic requirements and exploring their career pathways. The students have the option of a business pathway or a Gen Ed pathway. Another difference for LVTI is that students in eleventh and twelfth grade alternate academic weeks with shop and co-ops, which makes it slightly challenging to schedule their classes, but we have it so that they meet their college professors every other week. We are always looking and working on different ways to provide extra support, including tutoring at certain points throughout these courses. And lastly, I will present Frederick Douglass. The students at Frederick Douglass have an increased college course load, which starts in the ninth grade. While other students in the designation schools start with one early college course in the spring at most, FDCA students take three college classes in ninth grade and four college classes in tenth grade. The college courses will escalate in eleventh and twelfth grade, giving students a path to an associate's degree. Last year, we actually started with four college courses in ninth grade, but decided this year to add an LPS writing course, which prepares the students for more intensive college writing in the spring of their semester, spring semester of ninth grade. Thank you. The LPS course is called Global Voices in Writing Today. At this point, I'm going to ask Shannon to discuss further Frederick Douglass updates.
I told her I'd take the hard slide. Okay, so this is an update on Frederick Douglass enrollment. When we left for the summer, all seats were filled to capacity with a waitlist. During the summer, multiple attempts at outreach were made in the day and evening with students and families to confirm their decision and to invite them to come in to enroll in NSCC. We experienced what we call a summer melt with our enrollment. People started saying they weren't coming. Everyone that was on the waitlist came off the waitlist, but on the day when students were to arrive, enrollment was falling short in the ninth grade. The enrollment currently stands at sixty-five in ninth grade and ninety-three in tenth grade. If you'll recall, last year, we also fell short in enrollment, and we made that up in the beginning of the year to the spring semester, and we increased to ninety-three. So we are hopeful that as we identify this fall, potential ninth grade students who wish to transfer to FDCA will fill that up again. We are looking at the whole process and considering all the facets of our enrollment for Frederick Douglass, and are considering earlier recruitment and enrollment timetable for FDCA for the fall. We have talked about adding spring visits and activities for new students so that they can develop familiarity and belonging with the school before they arrive. And we want to communicate more broadly and frequently with students and families to encourage their enrollment. The principal, Heather Frabiano, made multiple, multiple communications. We had help from Gary Torres and Doracy Perez over the summer, but we want to be planned Last, I formed a Frederick Douglass Enrollment Committee to explore all the aspects of the enrollment process. The work of this committee starts next week and will help us clearly communicate a strong and effective enrollment process at FDCA. I want to share some of the summer projects that have happened because I think it will shed light for you into some of the ways that we're working on Early College, and it will also connect back to Bobby Bishop's presentation. Okay, so we, earlier Jenny mentioned that LPS has a Pathways Course, and students in this course are building up their writing skills so that they get like an extra dose of writing instruction to build them up for their college classes. This class, we're trying to look at more closely and give it a reset because we established this class actually many years ago. So my first summer project was to invite ELA department chairs and teachers who teach the course to a book study on how to effectively teach writing. This was the book that I used, The Writing Revolution. This book really dives into how to use writing to promote critical thinking and also gets into the real nuts and bolts of how to improve writing at the sentence level and at the paragraph level. These are teaching skills that are not always taught in educator degree programs. Those are skills that we have to continually build up and hone as educators. The feedback from the group was that this book was very helpful, practical, and would, you know, immediately improve the course. Another summer project for Early College was the Early College Co-Staff Development. This was an event that brought together LPS teachers and college professors from NSCC and SSU, along with Early College coordinators and administrators. I co-presented the first day of this event with Derek Edmonds, an Early College coordinator. We use this time to generally inform people about the equity mission of Early College. We shared how and why Early College was first developed to increase the numbers of underserved students who enroll and persist in college. This is important information for all and especially helpful for new teachers and professors, and we've learned that we just can't take it for granted that everyone actually knows what, the why behind why we're doing this program. Participants had an opportunity to share, reflect, and talk at the summit and co-plan. We had panels of teachers and professors who work really well together and share their experience of how their relationships developed over time. We wanted to share models of the best of our program so that people could share in that vision of excellence in program support. Earlier, we discussed how the Spanish language pathway was only the beginning of our work to make courses more accessible to MLE students. This summer, a group of teachers and professors, including an AP and ESL teacher, came together. This was a joint project planned by deans at North Shore and me. They came together to work on course shells for two of our courses, Speech and Understanding Higher Ed. To explain course shells, it's something that they build on their course management system, Blackboard, where it's, they're designing a course as if it's going to take place. There's a professor using their syllabus and uploading all their assignments. They're working with LPS teachers to have folders full of supports, including vocabulary activities, graphic organizers, reading questions, and more. There's academic freedom at the college, and professors are not, cannot be compelled to use this course, but we presented it at the Co-Staff Development as something that is there and let people, you know, explore what is there, to set a vision for what a supported course looks like. But also, this is something where, when the deans are hiring adjunct professors or even existing professors who are teaching a new course or new to Early College, they can offer and say, we have this here for you to look at and potentially use and copy into your own course as you like. So that was the beginning of that, and that's important work because we really are combining two institutions and systems that weren't exactly made for each other. So AP and AP and Early College courses are considered like the next level of course, and where, in terms of the equity work and the curriculum, the co-curricular work that we need to do is, you know, a lot about building, understanding of who can be in that course and what it takes to create a course that is accessible. We have a long road to travel together because we are two separate institutions, but I just felt it was important to share that our institutions are mindful of this, and although Salem State did not take part in this particular curriculum work, they were really interested and really invigorated when they saw it to work on it with us as well. Okay, this is my last slide, and I just want to share some updates with you. So we have an Early College Designation Enrollment Committee forming, and it does start work next week. And the reason that I originally started forming it was because up until this year, we had seats open in Early College. We were still convincing kids to take part in Early College, but we reached that tipping point where now we have waiting lists for Early College. So we have to be really mindful about how we're meeting the equity mission of Early College and how students are being enrolled in the course, and how we're going to make up a clear process of how you end up on the waitlist or not. So to do that, we really have to look at the systems of enrollment that are happening in our schools. So I am working with Deputy Gores and Bobby Bishop and Jenny, and we have people coming from the high schools, and we're going to start by just finding out like what exists, what is, what are all the steps that we go through to enroll students? And this has evolved, and now it's called the Advanced Coursework Enrollment Committee, so we can examine both how we enroll into AP and Early College. You know, I think that we have responded by, we have responded to widen the door a lot by just simply adding more APs and more Early College opportunities. That automatically creates so many more seats and hits so many more students, but we have to refine the process and make it just a really clear and strong enrollment process. The Frederick Douglass Enrollment Committee is also forming to strengthen all the processes of Frederick Douglass enrollment. We've learned so much over the last two years, and we thought we were all set when we left for the summer, and we weren't. So we are going to meet, discuss, and explore the ways to make Frederick Douglass enrollment clear, strong, and successful. We have new leaders across departments, and they all need to have a voice in this school enrollment process. I think it's a great, Frederick Douglass is a great learning ground for us as we develop more programs like this. So we want to really make it strong and make it clear. The High School Schedule Committee is forming in November. Over the summer, as you know, we worked with a constituent group, including teachers' union representatives, to work on small changes to the high school schedule, and we implemented those changes to make it a little better for this year. However, we needed to convene a larger team of representatives to meet in November to work on the schedule for SY twenty-five. In this schedule, we hope to better meet the needs of students and expand opportunities such as increasing Early College credits and exploring how to have Early College seniors take their courses during the day on college campuses. And we are also currently working on the Frederick Douglass Designation Application. It's different than the grant that we're in now. The designation process will make it a permanent grant funding pathway to unlock grant funding for Frederick Douglass. And we're working on that in partnership with North Shore Community College and Jobs for the Future, which is an organization we've worked all through the Early College process. And just a pending update will be in the future. We have twenty-five students who all showed up on day one to attend their Early College Promise Year at SSU campus, and we will report on their success after September one. And those are all my updates, and I don't know if you have any questions.
Thank you. Member Capola, Member Pena, Member Dugan, Member Castellanos.
On the enrollment, is it still only going to be for Thurgood Marshall? Are you, you know, thinking of expanding that?
So what we did the last two years is we had a first-round lottery at Thurgood Marshall. Both years, we did not fill all the seats. So we went to a second round, and we opened it up to Pickering and Breed. So if we are going to change that process, that would be up to these people here. I think that we stuck with the Marshall, first pass at Marshall because we still had a very high enrollment at Lynn English that we felt we still needed to target.
Member Pena.
Yeah, well, you answered one of my questions that Don asked, if you're going to expand the recruiting to other areas. Another question I had is, are you planning any more like fairs or more, to have more parent engagement? Because I still talk to parents today who had no clue that Frederick Douglass existed. So if you have any plans on trying to, any more fairs or anything that you'd like to maybe get more engagement or more communication out there?
I think that this process has really told me. So what we did this year was we planned, and we communicated to So we, what we did this year was we planned, and we communicated to Thurgood Marshall students and families, different events where we came and we had a team there, and we met with families and students, and we talked them all through early college, and we talked them through Frederick Douglass. And we didn't do that to the same saturation point at Breed and Pickering. So knowing how important that waitlist is and the fact that we blew through it and that we, we, we need to have a longer waitlist, in fact, is, is definitely going to, will want to be my suggestions when I work with that group, is that we, we have a more saturation of communication with all the middle schools. So when that point comes, I mean, it, it's, it will create some more interest, and it will make it, you know.
Possibly collaborating with other departments, like Mr. Bishop's department, that might be getting more communication, more engagement out there.
Yes.
Thank you. Member Dugan.
Thank you for your presentation. Just to kind of, my first two questions are answered, so thank you, Donna and Lenny. But just to piggyback off what Lenny said, you know, I'm sort of experiencing the same thing where I'm out in the community, and a lot of people don't really know that this exists. So I think that's something we need to work on, which you obviously express the same concern too, so that's a good thing. In terms of their early collegehood, excuse me, early college program at Classical and English, I, I went through that with my sons, and unfortunately, it was during COVID his freshman year, my younger son, so it was a little awkward. But I think sometimes the professors were, he was a freshman in high school, so I think sometimes the professors were saying things, and it was like, you know, like, he's a freshman in high school, you know? Intelligent, he gets that from his mother, not me, but, you know, he really is a, he was a young kid at the time. So I guess my question is, how are we vetting the professors and how are we, you know, working with them to, I don't want to, but like, ratchet it down a bit, to, to work with, you know, 14, 15-year-old kids where they're not used to that, you know, in their normal day-to-day life?
So I have to say that, I have to really say that this, there's amazing work being done by early college coordinators. They, they visit all the classes, they have a pulse on what's happening in the, in the classes, and they build relationships up with the LPS teachers and the professors. You know, their, their, their goal is to create those relationships so that, I mean, professors are experiencing the shock sometimes of the first time they've been in high school, not all of them, but, you know, they may be used to teaching this course on a college campus, and, and so that is something that they often come to the coordinators and like, "They're not keeping up with my pace." Or, you know, they, they come with, with their thoughts, and they have conversations, and those conversations over time kind of change the practice, but those, you know, and there's also a really tight connection with us and the deans at the college. We meet weekly with the deans at the college from both colleges, and it's a lot of meetings, but we work through a lot of problems, and the communication is really high to where I would say that, you know, we, we know we could, we could talk to you right now about the certain classrooms where we have things happening that we're, we're working on to make things better. And the early college co-staff development that we did in the summer was also targeted at some of the pain points. And I could go into detail and talk for a long time, but I think that it's, it's, it's talking about being, our students being college-ready, but the college is also being high school-ready, and how we can work toward that. So the projects that you see us working on are, are toward that, you know, like, that co-curricular work is, is, is like symbolizing to everyone at that, at that summit that we need to do this co-curricular work, and we need to work together to, to make that sort of college-ready, high school-ready secret sauce at Lynn Public Schools. And, you know, no district has, or college has really completely figured this out because it's, it's only been a few years, and it's grown really fast. And, and there's no hand from the sky actually coming to, like, make our systems work together. It's just us together having to work on it.
I just want to add to that. Dr. Gardner and I have, over the past few years, have had lots of conversations with North Shore and Salem State. Salem State seems to go a little smoother, but in both cases, there are still limitations. We can't vet them.
Yeah.
There are unions involved, but to Dr. Gardner's point, we work closely with the college's deans who do vet them. And the work that Dr. Gardner and her team have done in trying to help educate on both sides is really making a difference.
Right. And I by no means wanted to sound like it was a bad experience for him at all, you know, obviously, he was a 14-year-old kid, so there were bad days, but the overall experience was great. I, the risk of sounding doom and gloom, is there a number that we, to get back to Frederick Douglass, that we would say, "Okay, this, this isn't going the way we want it to go"? Is there a magic number where we would be concerned about it not working anymore in terms of enrollment?
So, you know, I was encouraged that we got to 93 in the sophomore class. I don't think it's, it's different than discovery when discovery first started, and I also do think that once that first set of students gets their associate's degree, it's game over. You know, I just think, I'm feeling very optimistic about this, even though I know we have work to do, and we have to work on communication and process and build up all those things. So the goal is 400 students, and that's what I'm shooting for.
Okay. We're cheering you on, so we definitely want to see this succeed, so thank you.
Member, yep. Member Castellanos, Member Gailey, and Member Mariano.
I believe in the early college promise. I think the work that you guys are doing over there is, is life-changing. I think there's a lot of growing pains, there's certain levels of enrollment issues that I've, I've, I kind of, I'm noticing around the marketing. I think that's a very exhausting process on its own, it's its new territory, especially when you're trying to, go ahead, Dr. Gardner, I think you were going to say something. Oh, sorry, I thought you were, I thought you were going to say something, sorry. If, if, I don't know what resources look like, but the collaboration that you guys got going on is phenomenal. SSU, North Shore, they have pretty strong enrollment and marketing people who are talented. I don't know what kind of collaboration we can get there. I know, I, I do follow the Frederick Douglass Instagram page. I love it. It's pretty interesting to see the updates, but we got to definitely figure out a way to, to bridge those gaps. I would also like to see who those 25 students are. I think figuring out how to capture the demographic, right? Because I myself is a first-generation low-income Latino, right? I came from the bottom, and I worked my way up to a master's degree. But I think the stories of first-gen successes out of this program can really create some momentum once you get to that point. But I think capturing it, or creating a data trail to figure out the demographics now, try to figure out the successes, keeping those, keeping those students connected as well, because I, I think it's important to kind of, you know, capture the mentorship opportunities that we have that possible come out of this, because I still reach out to professors, and I still seek that mentorship still to this day for folks I've met in higher ed. I don't know if we have access to advisors from Salem State or North Shore. I know they do have, you know, their own processes. I do recommend checking out the Salem State University's Office of Civic Engagement office. I am an alumni, that's why I got my master's degree, and they have student leadership organizations across campus that are, they would, I think this would be a great opportunity to kind of blend, blend what we're trying to do. Thoughts?
It's a great suggestion. I'll definitely check that out. This summer, there were two students who kindly, like, lent me their stories. I was able to show their photos, their bios, and these were students who graduated early college in 2017, and it definitely had an impact on their lives. And in both cases, somebody at the school said, "Hey, I think you'd be great for early college." So I think the impact on the, the teachers and the professors, just seeing their pictures and reading their stories was incredible. So what you're saying of asking them to lend us a little more time would be a great idea.
I just, I want to say thank you for hearing me, and I want to also talk about first generations, you know, when we talk about that, like, it's, it's crucial to see a belief system around you as a freshman, a sophomore, or a junior, whatever, that moment of, of window opening and education. I think the early college promise can be a little bit discouraging as a first-gen looking in, you know, like, looking at the stuff, going to college, that's intimidating, right? How do we unravel the intimidation factor? Because I'm going to be honest with you, I, I almost never made it, and I had a lot going on in my life, and it was awesome, tremendous heroes of educators who came behind me to give me that little bit of the jolt that I needed, that confidence, because I would not be here. I wouldn't be here. I wouldn't be at this seat. And that's something that, we got to work on the intimidation factor, because that's what, that's what we're looking for. And when I hear the promise, early college promise, you know, we talk about what that looks like, we really got, it's, it's, some of these kids, you know, they might not even take a chance, so I think we got to, we got to build it up.
You're 100% right, and, you know, one of the things that we, we notice is that we're working so hard on all these credits, but we need students to take that, that next step and go to college after they leave here, take those credits and enroll and persist when they, when they go on. So it's in our minds, and it's, it's, it's much bigger than just offering courses and saying, "Oh, it's a great opportunity, come and get these credits." It's really embedding an idea in a, in a trajectory for them.
Member Gailey, Member Mariano.
Dr. Gardner, I have a, like, helpful hints from Ms. Gailey kind of thing.
Okay.
Okay. So.
Going to sit up straight?
I was talking with Andy over here, and one of the things that I'm wondering is, if you recall, when we were way back at Lynn English High School, we would have, like, an orientation day where the students would go to, come to the school, and they would get to meet people, and students would talk to them. I didn't know if you did that with the early college students that were coming in for ninth grade? If, if not, maybe that's a possibility?
That's another great idea, student ambassadors.
Yeah, and also, I was, we were discussing about possibly, like, sometimes you can have, like, a summer camp, like, they can come in, see what it would be like to come into North Shore, because they're probably intimidated a little bit about coming, and all their friends go to the ninth-grade orientation over at Lynn English, and they're all saying how great it is, so they're probably, that's, I'm thinking maybe that could be a reason why they were like, "Hey, I want to go with my friends." But those are just helpful hints from me.
No, that's great, and they, they did have an orientation at Frederick Douglass, but I think what we talked about was getting them in quicker in the spring.
Yep.
Yeah. And doing both things.
And do they realize they're getting an associate's degree?
Well, someone did, because they enrolled in the college, you know, and I think, but I think, you know, they're taking a big step for, for eighth graders. They're taking a very big step, and, you know, a lot of their friends are going.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's, it's a lot for them, and they, they definitely need to be made to feel part of that sense of belonging that Bobby was talking about.
And you know how proud I am of that school and all the work that you're doing and how good it's going? And we're on the cutting edge here, and we're just going to continue to cut, and our students are going to be getting associate's degrees, going on to MIT, and everything's going to be great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Member Mariano.
Just so you know, MIT does not take transfer students. You'd have to start as a freshman. I say as a college professor. It's one of the saddest things, but WPI takes the transfer students, so just in case you're wondering. I, I could only talk about a couple things because of, you know, rules and restrictions on me, but what I wanted to ask, because I think questions are okay, is whether or not the students who go to Frederick Douglass are able to talk about what I would call the fringe benefits that they get for going to school on a college campus. For instance, their rec room that they get to hang out in is very popular. It is right next to my office. It is very popular.
I'm sorry, Dr. Mariano.
Hanging out in the library is also very popular. There are giant chairs in the little courtyard between the building and the main building. That is very popular. I often hear students saying, "How come you all get to hang out outside? We don't get to hang out outside." I'm guessing this is between ninth and 10th graders. So my question is, do the students who go to Frederick Douglass and have these perks get to talk about these perks outside of just their Frederick Douglass folks? Because my guess is, if other people found out that they get to sometimes play soccer on the grass outside the MOD buildings when they have a free minute, that might really sway enrollment. So I hope you heard my question in there.
I heard your question, and, you know, I, I think that's a great, another great idea to bring some students with us on the roadshow to discuss.
A great question.
The college.
Yes. State Ethic Board of Massachusetts is watching.
I'm always watching.
Yeah. Thank you.
Dr. Gardner, Ms. Wedges, thank you so much for the update and all the, the great work. We're really excited about this program and really appreciate the update. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is a recommendation of an interim administrator of special education.
Thank you. So with the impending departure of our current special education administrator, Dr. Oscar Duttuya, the first week of December, I am recommending Dr. Christina Calella, principal of Shoemaker, as our interim special education administrator. She has a well-defined philosophy of special education centered on the belief that all students can succeed with provided and necessary supports, scaffolds, and modifications. This belief is evident in her delivery of programming while leading a school that has 50% of students in their special education program. Her time at Shoemaker has allowed her to ensure that one of the most marginalized groups, students with disabilities, have necessary resources and the support to be successful. She has worked diligently to create a community of inclusivity considering the unique population of the school. I appreciate her educational philosophy, which emphasizes that when discussing a student with disabilities, we are talking about one unique individual with specific needs. Her understanding that each student requires their individual needs to be addressed and to achieve success aligns with the values of our district. A significant part of her belief system stems from the importance of communication. She acknowledges that effective communication is vital in various aspects of education, including homeschool communication, student-teacher communication, communication with administrators, collaboration with external medical and service providers as well. She has demonstrated an exceptional commitment to communication, which is highly valued by the families at Shoemaker. Additionally, her doctoral research has provided valuable insights into programs and placements of students at the secondary level, underscoring the significance of communication and addressing absenteeism in students with disabilities. Dr. Calella's experiences emphasize the need for considering the progression of students through programs and schools, and ensures a smooth transition and addresses their evolving needs from K-12. Her advocacy for consistent and clear communication, knowledge of special education process, procedural safeguards, has made a significant impact on the quality of education of students received during their time at her school. She promotes a culture where teachers She promotes a culture where teachers share the needs of professional development and curriculum to ensure student success. She also has acknowledged the importance of individualizing curriculum to meet diverse needs of students. So since her appointment as principal at Shoemaker, she has prioritized creating an inclusive learning environment and adopting whole-school initiatives that benefit all members of the school community. Her principal experience of over seven and a half years and strong leadership skills will allow us to work towards the goals in our tiered focus monitoring report, action corrective action plan, and her financial acumen will support the discovery of areas where we can conduct internal audits to improve the efficiency of the department. Her formal education does include a doctoral degree in educational leadership from Endicott College, as well as courses in ethical leadership and diversity access equity that address requirements around special education compliance. During her time at Shoemaker, it's important to note that she has dedicated herself to ensuring that IEPs are compliant. She has read and reviewed IEPs before they go home to families and provides feedback to make any adjustments that need to be made before they're sent home within that 10-day window. And all reports are sent home with or without request, with 48 hours for family parental review. And she currently holds certifications as a principal, assistant principal, superintendent, assistant superintendent, the SEI endorsement, and special education administrator. So respectfully, I'm asking that at my recommendation to place Dr. Colella as the interim administrator for special education be given earnest consideration.
Member Gailey.
Can I just make a motion?
You may.
Okay, I would like to make a motion to have Christina Colella be the interim administrator of special education.
Second.
Any discussion?
Dr. Christina.
Yeah, from the, contingent on successful contract negotiation.
Oh, contingent on a successful contract.
Member Dugan?
Yeah, just on a personal note, I know I'm really excited about this one. Your staff's really going to miss you. I know one, when she finds this news out tonight, when I get home, is probably going to be in tears. But congratulations, congratulations. And you haven't got it yet, but I'm assuming it's going to happen. Thank you. Thank you for all you've done at Shoemaker. It's my neighborhood school too, so thank you.
Roll call, please.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Capola?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gailey?
Yes, highly recommend.
Member Magnolia?
Yes.
Member Pena?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
All right, Member Capola, any votes taken in the Personnel Subcommittee on October 10?
Yes, we did. Deb, do you have that? I don't have the job in front of us, and I know that we added something on that.
Personnel sub, chief academic officer, we added experience in grants under the education and knowledge section.
Yep, okay. Yes, we did, and so move.
Any second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Capola?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gailey?
Yes.
Member Magnolia?
Yes.
Member Pena?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes. Sorry, I skipped. So let's do superintendent's entry plan and goals.
Thank you. So you have, within your materials this evening, the Equitable Student Outcomes Vision and Action Entry Plan. There are just a few things I want to highlight. I know this was sent to you in advance for your review. And I then will also talk about the goals, the evaluation goals, and answer any questions you may have. So my entry plan is slightly different, right, in terms of the timeline, because I was afforded the opportunity to start March 1 versus July 1. And so the introduction on page three begins with that period of transition time. And the actual plan that was approved at that time is one of, it's in the appendix all the way sort of at the end. And it details that 85-day period where, at that time, Superintendent Deb Ruggero and I worked together to do the transition, the formal transition. So I moved into, I gave this a lot of thought and consideration. It is very deliberate in the process of priorities, both short-term and long-term, for very specific reasons as I move through this current year. So if you turn to page four, I just want to highlight the transition phase and plan, which was from March 1 to June 30. And that would have been phase one. So I am currently in phase two, continuing to review existing systems and structures through an equity lens, identifying opportunities for streamlining and efficiency enhancements. And so as I move forward, at the top of page five, I just want to really stress that this entire plan is really underpinned by several key principles. One, a commitment to conducting a thorough assessment of administrative and operational systems with a focus on identifying areas to streamline and enhance efficiency and clarity of process that will lead to better outcomes for all students. The establishment of a culture rooted in data-driven decision-making. We will implement data collection and analysis protocols to inform district-wide strategies, ensuring that our actions are well-informed and impactful. And then the creation of regular communication channels, which will facilitate seamless information flow among all stakeholders. These channels will enhance transparency and accountability, allowing us to work together more effectively. There are a number of findings in terms of strengths and opportunities for growth. I will just highlight, not read each paragraph, but just highlight the strengths as I move through that period of time from March through June 30, really doing a lot of observation and continuing to do so. One of the strengths for our school district is the current implementation of high-quality instructional materials. We do have that transition period, which is dedicated to making sure that teachers continue to receive those high-quality instructional materials, that we continue to implement what we currently have, and also develop committees and pull them together to address those areas where HQIM is still not in place. So, but that is definitely a strength. And we continue through this year to provide professional development on the WIDA ELD standards, which is critical to the work that we're doing with our students that are, whose primary, her first language is not English, right? The second one is really focusing on our diverse and inclusive community, looking at the commitment to equity and culture, as you see, especially with the addition of our DEI Department of One. And so really looking, what are the strengths that we currently have as a district to foster belonging, right? Because belonging is the most difficult piece of DEI. Number three was the focus on the student growth and really looking at the commitment to student growth and improvement in all areas, K-12. The district has started to implement data-driven strategies already to track and support individual student progress so that they may reach their full potential and that we can support our leaders and teachers, right, with a very coming-soon-to-you, a data dashboard visualization where it will be facilitated for all teachers in the classroom. Also, the community partnerships and resources are definitely a strength for our community in terms of organizational ability to leverage the partnerships, resources, and educational experiences for our students. And so that also aligns with our community resources and extends beyond the classroom. We've also been, and at some point in the near future, we'll talk more about some of the new partnerships that we have acquired. I know Mr. Bishop spoke about Latinos for Education. That's just one of the ones that we've acquired recently. But we will continue to do that in the local and broader community. Growth opportunities, addressing achievement gaps across all groups of students to ensure that all of us, all the students that have any gaps in performance are addressed appropriately. Looking as well as enhancing special education. We've talked about, a lot about the corrective action plan and intending to do a financial audit of SPED, as well as a programmatic audit of our special education models to ensure that they are supporting all students. Our professional development and teacher retention is also an area for growth opportunity. Mr. Bishop discussed some of the reasons why and how we do need to grow in terms of not only recruiting, but retaining, right, teachers of color and leaders of color. And then this entire model and the entire plan is really based on the framework of coherence. Coherence is, as you see there, there are four bullets that really define it. It's focusing direction, clearly defining our educational goals and direction. It's cultivating collaborative cultures, creating an environment that encourages collaboration and shared responsibility, securing accountability, establishing systems that hold us accountable for student outcomes. And lastly, deepening learning, which is continuously improving our understanding and approach to teaching and learning. So that's why the entry plan is called Equitable Student Outcomes. I elaborate a little bit on that at the bottom of seven, and then go into page eight and nine, which is really in alignment with Mass DESI's framework for coherence as well. And it encompasses three things, which is instructional design, which is, that's, and underneath there, you'll see all of what that covers, curricular materials, assessment, equitable practices, learning environment, pedagogy, which is extremely important, right? Not just what are we teaching in terms of what is the physical material, the book, but also how we are teaching our students, delivering and reaching our students of, that are sitting in front of us. So those students that are socio-economically disadvantaged, minority students, special education students. The tiered supports is really all about how do students access the vision? Talking about data systems and access to resources as well. And then systems and structures is how do we create that integrated system and sustain what the results are for the vision? Because it's, one thing is to achieve it, and then another, right, step to that is how do we attain it and continue to grow upon those performance metrics that we end up delineating in the future? And so part of that is also staff development and competency. It's structural support, continuous improvement cycles, as well as human resources. So I do want to actually introduce my mass coach, Dr. Meg Mayo Brown, who has come not only to support me, but also to share some information about the new superintendent's evaluation process before I ask for the recommendation of the acceptance of these actual goals. So, Dr. Mayo Brown, sure.
Good evening, Mayor Nicholson, members of the school committee. It's an honor to be here tonight. As Dr. Alvarez said, my name is Dr. Meg Mayo Brown. I am a recently retired superintendent from Massachusetts. I served for 14 years as a superintendent in Fall River and Barnstable. I am now the program director for the new superintendent's induction program, which is a collaboration between the Mass Association of School Superintendents, or MAS as referred to it, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, DESI, and in collaboration with the Massachusetts Association of School Committees. They designed the program in 2010. Dr. Alvarez is in cohort 14 of that program. She has, is one of our more accelerated superintendents in the program. She had the benefit and the wisdom of the school committee hiring her in advance of July 1, so she could do many of her transition activities. So part of the program is to support new superintendents in developing an entry plan, which she has done, a report of entry findings, which she is delivering to you this evening, which positions the school committee, the district, and the superintendent to develop a strategic plan to guide the district through the next number of years, as you know. So part of that process, also part of the process of the induction program is helping superintendents in their first year work with their school committees to establish their first-year evaluation goals, which is an effective entry plan, report of entry findings, while also maintaining the momentum of the district. So I'm here tonight to answer any specific questions you may have about the evaluation goals that the Department of Education and MAS are recommending to school committees to consider as you consider evaluation goals for a first-year superintendent.
Thank you. So if we could turn to page 19 and 20, you will find, these would be the three recommended goals. And again, because I started in March, the key actions begin March 1. So goal one, having an effective entry and direction setting. Then by late spring, the district would have a broad recognition by stakeholder groups with the district's most critical needs, and will have a widely understood process underway to identify the strategies and goals that will address those needs most effectively and the measures that will be used to assess progress. So there are three actual timeline points, and we're actually almost up to the third one, which is where we launch the process, right, for the strategic timeline. And that is one of the items in the agenda for communication later in our actual meeting. From there, there are benchmarks, which means that all the presentations that are done are done on schedule, the strategy development process is launched, and then results of spring survey leaders, including administrators, teacher leaders, school committee and union teachers, leaders, excuse me, demonstrate awareness and engagement in the entry process and confidence that the report of entry findings captured important insights about the state of the district and the issues that most require attention. So that would be really looking at those priority areas that I've outlined here, as well as then providing additional qualitative feedback. Goal two is really, as Dr. Meg Mayo Brown mentioned, maintaining momentum during the transition, keeping the district moving forward with this year's transition and leadership and working with principals and other district leaders to ensure that meaningful progress is made on critical district and school goals. There is a current strategic, we're in the last year of the strategic plan 1924. The school improvement goals for principals and district administrators does align with what was written in that plan. And so we will continue to monitor that. And that would be found as we go through key actions, one, two, and three, right below it, with that timeline from October 15 all the way through June 30 of 2024. And then on page 20 would be the benchmarks regarding completed educator evaluation plans, logs or notes demonstrating at least three visits per school, the analysis of summative evaluation reports. And then goal three being the, my participation in all of the required sessions, as well as some of the activities, engagement, and all of the coaching that I'm currently receiving. So I would submit that and all of these other artifacts that are under the benchmarks, the calendar, documents, attendance, and contacts with Dr. Meg Mayo Brown, and verification that I've been participating in the new superintendent's induction program. that I've been participating in the new superintendent's induction program. So.
Get the question?
Yes.
Okay.
I just have a quick, the tool that we used to use before, so are we, are we not going to, so in addition, we're going to utilize that tool, that format, or we just, is this the, the performance evaluation you prefer for your own?
So this is only for the first year, right? And it's leading into what we would actually, how we would define not only the strategic plan for '24 to '29, and then also the development of those goals for next fall, which would be specific metrics that would align to that strategic plan.
Could I?
Yeah, please.
May add? I think your question, if I'm understanding, is also would you use the same tool that you've been using for the superintendent evaluation?
Or an updated, modified, because it's.
Sure. And you would be. These, that tool requires a professional practice goal, a student learning goal, right, and a district improvement goal, as well as an evaluation of the standards, performance standards and indicators. So yes, you would still be advised to use that tool, but for the goals of that tool, these would be the superintendent's three goals.
Any other questions from the committee? Yeah, Member Dugan.
Yeah, I guess I just need a little clarity on that. So the goal, would these be professional practice goals to learn, or am I misunderstanding that completely?
You're not misunderstanding, you're not misunderstanding at all. When the department, when DESI released guidance on this, and I believe Dr. Alvarez has the appendix included in the, in the plan on page 47, if we could just take a look at that for a moment.
It starts on 46.
46. Yes, thank you. Thank you. So if I can refer you to the first paragraph under what changes in the process and timeline should be considered for new superintendents, the very last sentence of that paragraph, the first two are district improvement goals, the third goal is related to the superintendent's own professional practice.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Make a motion to accept the superintendent's entry plan and goals.
Second?
Call please.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Capola?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gaitley?
Yes.
Member Magnolia?
Yes.
Member Pena?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes. Doctor, thank you so much for being here, and superintendent, thank you so much for putting together this document. There's a lot of great thinking and work captured in here, and I think we're all excited to be working on this together with you, so thank you.
Thank you.
Member Gaitley, any votes taken in the building and grounds subcommittee?
Yes, there was a vote taken in building and grounds subcommittee meeting. Motion was made to approve the Shoemaker School grounds renovation. But I have a little question of the mayor, because there's a donation of $100,000, do I need to put that in the agenda under new business next week?
Um.
No, to the nonprofit.
Right, exactly. I don't think so.
Oh, it's a.
Correct, Donna.
The donation was to the PTO, yeah.
Oh, okay. All right. So that was the motion to approve Shoemaker School grounds renovation.
Is there a second?
Second.
Call please.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Capola?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gaitley?
Yes.
Member Magnolia?
Yes.
Member Pena?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes. Is there a motion to amend the agenda and move the executive session?
So moved. I'd like to amend the agenda to move the executive session to the end and move up the communications and information.
Any second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Post, let's have it. District strategic plan timeline.
So the district strategic plan timeline from 2024 to 2029 is really just an overview for timeline of activities as we go through what's required, similar to the process that the school committee engaged in. Most of you, I believe, were on the school committee when you did the last one. And so in October, we would begin overall project development and management, and then continue on. And so you'll see a list of all the defined activities month by month. This is a fluid, obviously, timeline. We are going, our, our end goal, of course, is to, on the back page, if you look at, really make it towards the January 2024, where we've already completed at least retreats one and two, February retreat three, and then continuing on through four, five, and six to be able to present the district's strategic plan to school committee in June. So. Kim, would you like to elaborate on the process?
I mean, right now, we're in the process of engaging a facilitator. It was very, we were very excited last time, and it just seems like we're duplicating the same thing in that when we began that process last time, it was Dr. Totwiler's entrance into the district, and this time it is Superintendent Alvarez's entrance. So we are in the process of engaging a consultant to help facilitate the process so that the entire leadership team can be participants. Just as we did the last time around, we'll look to engage multiple stakeholders, both within the schools and in the community. Reference throughout the document is, is two teams that will participate in the process to ensure that we have all those voices at the table, including a large student voice. You know, maybe we'll tap you for, to be, to be a part of that. You know, that was a highlight of our team last time. I mean, I think it was the very first time that we engaged so many stakeholders in that process. I know Mr. Castellanos was a vibrant member of that and, and saw the value in that and very excited by that. So we're, we're really excited to begin this new process. We'll finish out this school year completing, and then we will write a brand-new five-year plan.
Wonderful.
Member Magnolia, did you have a question?
Yes, I did. So having just finished strategic planning at the college, I'm well, well steeped in this process.
Yeah.
And my question was about sort of the benefits of polyvocality over univocality in terms of the writing of it. Sometimes when you engage a number of stakeholders, you can end up with a strategic plan that has a number of different voices, sometimes that work in concert and sometimes that compete. So there are benefits for polyvocality that are challenging to align. There's also benefits, though, to univocality in terms of whether or not the consultant is the chief writer, you know, is, is the feedback from the multiple stakeholders going to be kind of digested by, you know, the, the chief writer? So if you, this is like a super in-the-weeds question, but I just want to understand how the district is.
And I think that's the importance of the facilitator.
Okay.
Right? And the, the plan is actually written primarily by the facilitator and the district leadership, but it is the voices of all that get incorporated, and they report out to one another.
Okay.
In their planning.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Should we adjourn this report?
Enrollment?
Oh, yeah.
Enrollment, yeah. I just want to share, we traditionally share the enrollment as of October 1st, where we were 16,841 students. And so this is just our minority enrollment as well. On the top page, By School, broken down, for your reference. And if there are any questions, I can, I can answer those as well.
Thank you.
So drawing inspiration from events like Defending Democracy, the Defending Democracy Gathering, and the State of Latino Education 2023 event, we embark on a deeper exploration of their profound implications for inclusivity and equity in education. These events not only serve as a commemorative milestone, but also as dynamic platforms for thought-provoking discussions, making a compelling case for the ethical responsibility of educating students, inclusivity, and democracy. The Defending Democracy event, marking the 160th anniversary and the emancipation proclamation of the Battle of Gettysburg and the Gettysburg Address, is an example of interactive and thought-provoking community engagement. It revealed the untold stories of our nation's Reconstruction era, breathing life into history through actors who portrayed Frederick Douglass and Abraham Lincoln. This event magnified its significance for us by its alignment with the critical work being undertaken through our DEI goals shared this evening. We are grateful for the collaboration with partners such as the Grand Army of the Republic, the Lynn Museum, and Lynn Arts. The State of Latino Education 2023, equally impactful, brought to the forefront the positive outcomes of enrolling marginalized student populations in early college programs. The event's resonance was amplified by the presence of members in the Massachusetts delegation, the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, and partner organizations dedicated to supporting innovation and early college initiatives. The recognition bestowed on our individuals, our own Gary Torres and Event Martinez from the Welcome Center, added a layer of celebration to the event, underscoring the remarkable strides made in fostering inclusivity. I was fortunate to be invited as a guest panelist by Latinos for Education for the State of Latino Education 2023 event, and I had the privilege of discussing the ongoing expansion of our early college program. The aspiration to mirror or exceed the representation of marginalized student populations in early college programs based on our overall demographics is an ambitious but yet prioritized goal. The LPS data from previous years spotlighted encouraging statistics such as the enrollment of Latinos in early college designation programs reaching approximately 76%. These numbers not only exceed all the overall percentage of Latinx students in the district, but also surpass the representation in high schools. While these accomplishments are commendable, they are still a reminder of the need for additional support for multilingual learner education students who constitute a substantial portion of the district and high school populations. Their representation in early college LPS student population stands at 17%, prompting the call to engage students more comprehensively and reshape expectations and mindsets. The crux of what we know as educators revolves around the profound impact of high expectations and equity within educational systems. High expectations provides a gateway to student success, a truth corroborated by proven outcomes. However, our understanding deepens as research reveals that the most significant transformation occurs when parents, caregivers, and teachers jointly establish and communicate high expectations for student achievement. The effect size of .70 linking to verbalizing these parental expectations to child underscores a substantial impact. Furthermore, when students themselves harbor high expectations, the effect size source to 1.33, a testament to the power of student agency. Teachers who express high expectations contribute to this equation with an effect size of .90. These numbers are indicators that the interaction of variables did not happen by chance. In stark contrast, low teacher or educator expectations yield an effect size of merely 0.3, underscoring the pivotal role of expectations again in shaping educational outcomes. In the context of our celebrations for Indigenous Peoples' Day, the significance of the day extends far beyond historical recognition. It serves as a poignant reminder of the fundamental importance of teaching students about democracy, equitable treatment, and the celebration of resilience and accomplishments. While acknowledging the painful history Indigenous people have faced, this day also becomes an opportunity to celebrate their communities and their invaluable contributions to the US, to our American society, especially in the face of generations of assimilation, discrimination, and genocide. Furthermore, as we continue to celebrate student success, recognitions like the Harvard Book Prize for Outstanding Students add a significant layer to our narrative. As we witnessed, three Lynn Public School students were awarded the Harvard Book Prize at the Harvard Club of Boston on October 4th. The recipients were Skylar Bochamp, Javier Patricio Santo from Lynn English, and Andy Lee from Lynn English, sitting over here at the end, if we could give him just a quick, I'm sorry, classical, a quick round of applause. And Lynn classical. And the presence of the president of the Harvard Club of Boston, who emceed the ceremony, further highlighted the significance of such honors and their capacity to inspire our brilliant students. Additionally, we're thrilled to announce that Lynn Tech has been recognized and awarded a Career Technical Initiative Round Eight Grantee Award. And so I was honored to be there when they actually were, Dr. Patrick Totwiler was one of the, with the Secretary of Labor and Workforce was also there, Lauren Jones, who gave Mr. Fred Gallo the award and also took an incredible picture with him. And so those momentous achievements underscore our commitment to providing students with the opportunities and pathways for success in various career fields. The presence of those dignitaries, such as the Massachusetts Secretary of Labor and Workforce Development, Lauren Jones, and the Secretary of Education, Dr. Patrick Totwiler, added to the significance of these initiatives in shaping the future of our students. So congratulations to Lynn Tech as they continue to expand and support programs that enhance workforce development. In closing, as we celebrate National Principals Month, we take a moment to honor our dedicated LPS leaders for their commitment to our students' success. In their tireless efforts, we find a beacon of hope and a testament to the transformative power of inclusivity, equity, and high expectations in our educational landscape. With these values at the forefront, we continue to march towards a future where diversity is celebrated, inclusivity is paramount, and every student can thrive. Bravo to all our LPS students, teachers, staff, parents, community members, legislators, and leaders that work daily to improve student equitable outcomes in education.
Thank you. Is there a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
I think we can just read out the.
Second.
Oh, well, let me read it out. That's right. Okay. I'd like to make a motion request for executive session for contract negotiations with non-union personnel, interim administrator of special education, and chief academic officer.
As well as the executive session minutes from September, yeah.
As well as ratification of votes, if any, taken in executive session. Oh, I'm sorry. He.
Yes.
Request for executive session, to approve executive session minutes from September 14th, 2023.
Second.
All right, call please.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Capola?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gaitley?
Yes.
Member Magnolia?
Yes.
Member Pena?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes.
Take Gary's on here tonight for us to.
I know.
Can you believe it?
You're at a convention.
Oh, yeah.
I'd like to move that we return to regular session.
Second.
Call please.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Capola?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gaitley?
Yes.
Member Magnolia?
Yes.
Member Pena?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
You're at a convention.
Oh.
Some type of convention.
I'd like to move that we return to regular session.
Second.
Call, please.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Capola?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gailey?
Yes.
Member Magnolia?
Yes.
Member Pena?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. On favor?
Aye.